I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one. If you would, please rise and pay your respects to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the head of state. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation.
Nation of God. Under God. Invisible. Whatever. Ghosts.
Thank you. Can we note the role with the excused absence of Mr. Spiz? He's got a county meeting this evening.
Okay, remember when I call your name, please state where you are. Corey Bailey.
Present, Oxford, Michigan.
Ed Hunwick.
I'm in North Fort Myers, Florida.
Tom Berger.
Present, Oxford, Michigan.
Meg Noth.
Present, Oxford, Michigan.
John Nold.
Present, Oxford, Michigan.
Mike Young.
Present, Oxford, Michigan.
There is a quorum.
Thank you. Let's move to item four, the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the Thursday, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one agenda as presented.
Before.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on the more on the motion? Seeing or hearing none. Those in favor, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Hunwick.
Yes.
Noth.
Yes.
Nold.
Yes.
Berger.
Yeah.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number five, which is the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of the previous planning commission meeting in February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. There's discussion. Mr. Noel.
Item number two, under the conditions upon the filing on the. It says this approval is only for the listed property location and for the phantom fireworks. I would suggest that we put maybe a slash mark between the listed slash property location. To clarify that.
Slash slot slash owner.
Yeah, something of that nature to clarify that.
Are you asking for the address of the property to be included? Is that what you mean?
Oh.
I think I wanted the motion to be tied to the property itself, the property number. So if anything changed ownership on the property, then the this would all, the motion would go away.
Then we don't want the property number. We want the owner's name.
Okay.
That's why I say slash. Current owner.
That's fine. I'll agree to that.
Okay. The only, my only question about that is if that's not what was stated, you can't, you can't change a motion. I would have to go back and listen to the motion because it has to be as, what's in the minutes has to be what was stated.
The motion has to be. Typed and written as to what was said.
Correct.
Correct that.
I can't change what if it wasn't said.
I, I think that when I'm looking at number two, which he's talking about, I said, the approval was only for the listed property. Location. So that means that is the correct location and for phantom fireworks. Now, if either one of the two disappeared, then there it's going to become null and void. The approval process that we granted. So I think it reads okay without making a change. I mean, that's the way I understand it to read.
Okay, that's the way I made it when I made the motion.
Pardon me?
When I made the motion, that was the intent. It might not have come out that way in words.
Okay. But it's, it's clearly, it's clearly made up in the top when Noel moved and I, I seconded. That it's actually for the address, which is eight, seven, nine, nine, eleven, South Apier Road with the parcel IDs. And the applicant is phantom fireworks. So I, I think that's stands okay.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, Tom. Uh, uh, no more discussion on my end.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Nope.
Seeing or hearing none. I'll call for a roll call vote. Approval of the minute.
Berger.
Yes.
Hunwick.
Yes.
Nold.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Noth.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Like to move to item six, public comment on items that are not scheduled for public hearing. Or items that are not on this agenda for this evening. Is there anyone out in the public wishing to speak on something that's not on the agenda?
Ms. Keynes has her hand raised.
Miss. Keynes, can you state your name and your address? You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mary Ann Keynes, President of the Stony Lake Village Condo Association here in Oxford Township, Michigan. My comment this evening, Chairman Young, is in regards to an item on the agenda. The final site plan for the Enclaves of Woodbridge, but I noticed that there was no time allotted for public comment. Under that agenda item. So I was wondering if I should make my comment at this time.
Ms. Keynes, um, there is, um, it's not listed here. But as a matter of procedure, you do get a, a public comment after the correspondence has been gone through. Okay, so we'll go through the planners report, the engineering report. Um, then we'll go through any correspondence from the fire department, parks, rec. Then we call for public comments. So you'll have a chance.
That, that would be fine. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, Susan, I can't see everybody. So if you can, I.
Yeah.
Don't hear anything. We're good.
There's nobody else.
Oh. Okay, let's close that. Move on to item number seven. Mr. Bailey.
I'm good.
Um, Mr. Burger.
I have no comments at this time.
Mr. Hunwick.
I have no comment.
Mr. Noel.
Thank you. No comment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Noth.
No, thank you.
Okay, very good. Let's move to item eight, public hearings, which they're on and on schedule for tonight. Item nine is on. Unfinished business. There is none for this evening. Let's move to item ten A, which is new business, the final site planning, Enclaves of Woodbridge. If the applicants here, we would like to get a brief summary of what you are looking for from the commission this evening. Give a brief explanation, give your name and your address. Uh, and then from there, we'll go to comments from our planner engineer and so forth. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Rich Rizzo with the development company. Uh, address is five, one, four, one, zero, Milano Drive, Suite one fifteen, McComb Township, Michigan. Um, this project was, uh, as the planners comments state, um, this project was pre, I'm sorry. This project was previously forwarded to the board with a favorable recommendation with conditions. Um, the only difference is, is that we are now eliminating phase two. Um, and phase one is, is remained unchanged. So we're here tonight to ask that the planning commission grants us the same recommendation.
Okay. Where should we start? I've got a few questions, but we'll wait for those until we get through the comments from the planner and the engineer, I think. So let's go with the planners comments first. Zach?
All right. I'll do a quick run through here as mentioned in the report and by the applicant. This had previously come through this body as a two-phase project. Due to complexities that are, would take far too long to explain. Um, it's been determined that it's the easiest to just do final approval for this phase one. It's essentially the same as what you saw before, fifteen duplex buildings for thirty units. Uh, the majority of them will be off a new private road. The, um, I'm jumping forward now to area width, height and setbacks. Uh, for those of you looking at home, the proposed development meets all of the setbacks. There is one. That has a variance for the north setback. Um, that's still active because it has a placeholder from when site plan was admitted. It meets the density. Um, it's minimum lot area, the building length. Um, the building spacing is spot on, although there's a comment on that I'll, I'll touch on. Side entry garage driveway is good. The access is good. It's got an internal street. Um, it's got proposed five foot sidewalks throughout. A couple of things that we do want to bring attention to is that it's our understanding the applicant wants to add decks and or patios to the rear of the buildings. Those should be added to the, the plan. And there are some instances where decks may not be possible because they're required to meet the same setbacks for the principal building. And especially sticky is between buildings one and two where it's at the minimum. And there are a couple that may be close to the lot line. So those should be added here. Um, and with meeting the setbacks. Uh, the other kind of ticky tack note is on the sidewalk around the site plan. It looks like the sidewalks are interrupted by the driveways. And by that, I mean, the driveway goes in is complete and then the sidewalk goes to the edge of that. Um, that can result in surfaces that are not as pleasant for pedestrians to use because it's more slanted. So our recommendation is to rejigger that and have the sidewalks. Um, go through and then the driveways connect up on the tops and bottom sides of that. Um, access and circulation, it's going to be serving less than twenty units. Uh, so it doesn't need a second access on there. If there are areas that will be designated as no parking, um, I suspect like the, the cul-de-sac probably will for fire truck turning. The location of those signs should be added to the site plan. And other circulation stuff is the township engineer approval and the fire chief approval. Parking is going to be in the driveways and the garage. So that's all good. Uh, we will defer comments for essential services to the township engineer. Uh, landscaping and screening is good. Uh, there haven't been changes from the previous plan. We mentioned there is sidewalks going internal to this and this side of the street of Market Street already has a safety path that connects down to Apier. Uh, lighting, as we brought this up before, the potential color temperature of the lights is very broad. Now, color temperature is, does it look like a, an orange glow or does it look like the sunlight on the middle of a, a. A solar eclipse or something there? Um, the lights that are allowed within the zoning ordinance have color temperatures of between. Twenty four hundred Kelvin and three, thirty five hundred Kelvin range. And so we recommended last time the planning commission adopted that recommendation that. The color temperatures for the fixtures be limited to that. So it's consistent with other development in the township. Um, as we noted too, uh, previously, the fixtures are not downward shielded. Rather, they're kind of the historic cast iron style with the globe on top. The planning commission has the opportunity to waive the, the shielded thing if it's a historic style. Uh, which it did last time. The sign is good. The architecture is good. Uh, for master deed and bylaws, we will defer comment to the township engineer. Um, and that's, that's our quick run through.
Okay, thanks. Let's review the comments of the, um. Township engineer, Mr. Sharp, are you there?
I am, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah. As Zach mentioned, and as you are, all are aware, this project was previously approved as a two-phase development. Um. Fortunately, the two phases in terms of infrastructure, meaning water, sanitary, storm sewer, they all were kind of independent of each other. So they're, uh, they're proposing. sanitary sewer system and, uh, and that is, we have capacity in the system there. Same with the water main, they're creating a loop for this north half, which we highly recommend. Um, just running through my, there were some things that were coming through here at the last minute. Uh, today even with regards to the bylaws or the, uh, the master deed and the exhibit B's. The applicant's attorney is trying to clear those up with our attorney and I would say they're about ninety nine percent complete. With regards to some of the language and things that are in there. So they'll get that cleaned up. Um, but like I say, it's just, it's just about completed. There is no safety path required in this development because it's not, uh, basically they're putting internal streets in, but there isn't a safety path. There's already a sidewalk along Market Street there. Accessibility is fine. Um, they cleaned up some of the items with regards to landscaping that were shown in the stormwater easements. And with regards to the decks, um, I don't know if Zach saw that plan that was coming through as part of the revised exhibit B drawings. Um, again, that was just being circulated today, but they do show the decks on some of those plans. They do not encroach into the storm sewer easements. I think they maybe, may have made them a little bit smaller. Um, but all in all, the, you know, it's pretty much the same plan as before. Uh, we will support the approval of this. And I'm here to answer any additional questions with regards to engineering related items.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Let's move on to the correspondence that was received from the township in reference to this package. Um, I think in everyone's packet, as you can see in, uh, Mr. Rizzo, you probably got it too. You got a copy of the attorney's letter. Um, that had quite a bit into it, um, which we'll go over in a minute. Your Oakland County sheriffs, the park and recreation, they didn't have any issues with it whatsoever. Um, I don't know if the chief's here tonight from the fire department.
Here.
Well, very good. I can't, can't see everybody. Sorry, chief.
Hey, no problem.
Do you have any, anything to add or, uh, any comments?
No, same as everybody else's. Everything was approved on the first time. Um, they do have the, the name is fine for the name of the street. There are no parking signs on the hydrant side of the street. So I'm good with everything else.
Okay, very good. Um. Let me go back to, well, before I do that, I think maybe we'll stop and get public comment. So we can kind of commagate all the questions that people may have. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor to the public. If there's anyone out in the public wishing to make a.
Uh, Mary Ann Keynes.
Comment, address and what your concern, support, or whatever it is.
Mary Ann Keynes has her hand raised.
Okay. Mary Ann Keynes.
Yes, Chairman Young, the comment I wanted to make was just in regards to traffic flow. Uh, Market Street is a very busy street, both on the west and the east side because of some of the other developments on the east side where. The Enclaves of Woodbridge will also be, um, residing. And back in two thousand and twenty, I was able to approach the township in where. They approved, um, Oxford Township Board, uh, approved a traffic study. That will be done from Ray Road to Drainer Road. And I've proposed in that traffic study to also to look at Market Street. To have left turn capability at both the east and west side. So those of us in Waterstone on the west side. And also on the east side where the, where the enclaves would be located as well as Meyer Traffic, Abbey Ridge Apartments. We get a lot of traffic, especially at the peak hours, you know, where school starts and, uh. And rush hour traffic when we post pandemic, whenever that might be. And so I don't know if this development, if any assistance can, can come from the developments of this, um. Now will be a thirty unit development. Um, if we can get any support to try and get that left turn capability. Uh, there is room for that infrastructure to take place on both sides on the east and west. It would just be a matter of. The township and MDOT, you know, putting it into, uh, implementation. So that was just my comment. I wanted to talk about traffic flow. And the possibility of getting a left turn capability for both sides, east and west on Market Street. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Ms. Keynes. And I will say that's, yeah, largely dependent on MDOT. And it will take a lot of requests to get them to look at that. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak or comment? Is that seeing none, Susan?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
Okay, let's go to the commissioner.
Nope, there's, there's one person.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name. Kitty.
Oh, yep, she does have her hand raised.
Okay, go ahead. Just state your name and your address, please.
Kitty Puliez, I am a resident in Waterstone on Cedar Street. Um, I, uh, I understand fully and completely what Mary Ann Keynes is, uh, bringing up once again about the traffic report. And it would be nice if the township would support the community in getting MDOT to do that. Uh, also, uh, why are we not able to see the, uh, plans when the public is in attendance on a Zoom meeting like this?
You mean have them live on a screen?
Yes.
Hmm, that may be possible. I'm not sure technically how to do it. Not from my end.
Maybe a sheer screen.
Do you know that the packets available prior to the meeting? The plans are available there?
I have the, uh. I have the, uh, meeting, uh, format, but I do, I didn't have anything that was, uh, with the. Packet, so to speak. I didn't see anything.
There's a packet. It's also available at the township hall right, right there for the public to view at any time.
Okay.
All the plans and everything that's on the agenda, the public's able to review that prior to the meeting. Is that it?
That's all. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else out in the public wishing to speak? Susan, is that it?
Yeah, I don't see anybody else.
Okay. Uh, let's go to commissioner's comments. Uh, Mr. Hunwick.
Uh, I wasn't going to make any comments, but, uh, I do, I guess, uh. What can we do or what can we do to assist? With the two individuals who wanted to address the left turn lane. Can we give them some information as to who they can contact or what? Uh, I'm sure that MDOT is going to probably not. Do anything, but at least we can try. Is there anything we, we can provide, uh, to the public to, uh, get them at least get something started?
Uh, rather than recommending that they go to Oakland County's MDOT department. I don't have that gentleman's name. Maybe Mr. Sharp does. And then also contact the township supervisor.
Mr. Chair, Tom Berger. Can I speak for a second?
Yes, hop in.
Um, generally in the past, uh, when changes are made on a major thoroughfare. A, a, a request from the township board would be considerable to, uh, ask for a meeting with MDOT and then address their concerns. So I would believe that Jack Curtis could get ahold of MDOT and make that request to have that meeting. In regards to concerns, uh, of what the public just spoke about, uh, the two people present. Um, it's always been a concern of a lot of us. As to how those should be addressed. And we thought when some of the improvements were going to be made on the M twenty four corridor. They somewhat stopped almost at the cover. The Culvers, uh, uh, site, you know, they already, uh, had made the improvements when the, uh, Leos went in and some of the other places, but. Um, they brought up good points about the left turn lanes and I think a, a, a request to the township board would be considerably. Uh, noticed and a request to have the township board contact. The, uh, MDOT personnel to then have a meeting of what their concerns are and see if they can address it. And if MDOT shuts them down, then they have to go from there.
Yes, correct.
Good place to start.
Good place to start. Yes.
And Mike.
Yep. All right, chief.
Jim Sharp and I have both been at meetings with MDOT. They are currently under the design phase of everything from they're at Go, um. Gateway Drive all the way up to Davidson Lake Road to rechange or redo everything in the next, you know, four or five years. Um, but just to kind of throw a tizzy into everybody, their first recommendation was to completely eliminate the crossover of our district. And we had to argue with them against that. So. Man, that's the place to go.
Highly unlikely that they're going to allow that left turn. They feel that the Michigan lefts are the deeper alternative as opposed to left-hand turns. Either from M twenty four on to Market Street or from Market Street on M twenty four. And the signaling and everything else. So the preliminary plans that Pete and I had seen. Um, do not show really much, much change. I mean, their biggest area of concern. Was right there in front of where Beaumont wanted to go and trying to configure all of those turnarounds in there. But they are high on the turnarounds. They're going to relocate a few of them. Um. We can bring it up at a meeting, but I don't think there's going to be much headway there. They just have their, their studies and their numbers that they have to run off of.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Uh, Mr. Noel. Questions or comments about the Enclaves of Woodbridge? You're muted.
My apologies. I don't have any comments or questions at this time.
Okay, uh, Mr. Burger.
Well, I think it was discussed prior to the meeting, but, uh. And then it was brought up through, uh, Zach also, and then, uh, Mr. Sharp made comments that this is only the property. Um, for the northern portion of what's. Off of Market Street. So it is one parcel ID number by itself. It's zero, two, three is the ID number, but. Um, that was something I had a concern of. I need to ask a question and I don't know how it needs to be answered, maybe through Zach. Um, I, when I looked at this and I, I look at the, uh, there's one unit that's proposed to go in with the, uh, actual driveways off Market Street.
Uh huh.
And then all the other units, the, the driveways are off the, the internal street and off Market Street. So then turn around at the cul-de-sac and come back out. So those buildings, when you look at the, uh, the, the building, unit number one, technically building number one has two units. The building unit that's closest to the, uh, the west side of the building. That would be maybe the tightest one for the setbacks of trying to put something on the rear of the building property, right?
Yes.
That's what it appears when I look at the plan, when I look at the actual documents. So I got to ask a question. If a person wants a patio on their back, in their backyard. That's not a deck. It's not a structure. It's part of landscape. That's not an encroachment then into that, uh, setback requirement, correct?
Correct. Uh.
We could have patios. We could have patios on some of those units. Or we could have structures on some of those units and still meet the requirements and we wouldn't need an amendment to the site plan to do that, correct?
Correct.
But would we have to be specific in a motion that way? Or would we have to say you should show whether you want decks on the back of these and amend the site plan to do that?
Well, so there are a couple of reasons why we would like to see the entirety of the proposed structure. Um, because it's a building condominium, it's a little bit different than single family houses where you can adjust stuff. Uh, we want to see where they're proposing it to make sure it's going to be outside of easements and away from landscaping and away from utilities. Uh, Mr. Sharp said that he's, he's reviewed the exhibit B for the condo documents and can confirm they're out. Um. What's from the planner, the thing that would keep me up at night is if. We all get hit, we're on a field trip somewhere and our bus rolls over and explodes and we all die. And five years in the future, someone's trying to put a deck on this thing and the folks are like, hey, 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 hey. There's no decks on these plans. So at the very least, I'd like to have some documentation of. Hey, we know you're going to put decks on there. It's okay as long as it meets the setbacks.
So that's. I hear you. I hear you very, I mean, I believe I understand and comprehend everything you said. Uh, that being said, then they would need to amend that. They need to amend this plan to come back to us to approve those deck locations. I mean, that's how I interpret it because if you don't have it on plan and we're going to prove a file, we're going to make final site plan approval recommendations with conditions. And we don't know where those locations of those structures would be. How do we, I mean, I don't feel like we could do that tonight then at this meeting unless we had those documents in front of us that were corrected.
It's, it depends how comfortable you are. Um, there are some communities that are very tight and they don't want to approve site plans with. Anything that needs to be changed. They want to see the final complete there. Others, and this is for individuals too, others are more comfortable saying, here are things we want to change it and staff. Will check and make sure you did it. In this case, uh, they can provide a description of it and you guys can determine. In this case, uh, they can provide a description of it and you guys can determine whether or not you're comfortable with, with staff reviewing that. Um, my understanding is they're relatively small decks or patios and it's going to be on the back of all the units is what they're, or could be on the back of the units depending on what the owners do. So personally.
Well, based on the floor plan design, it would look like they would come off that door wall on the back of the unit. Cause I looked at the floor plan too. So, you know, looked at what their unit floor plans are, that what they've submitted to us. My concern, how do we, how do we put the limitation to meet the setback requirements that would be permitted without knowing the sizes?
Who, yeah, that's my question. Who's putting it in? The builder or, or is it on the owner?
Well, it could be either or maybe.
Yep, I, I would ask that of the applicant. My understanding is generally it will be put in at the time of construction. Uh, but it could be done later on as well.
Because the governance of the setback will come into play when they come in to apply for a building permit.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Correct. So, since, since we've heard, heard from Mr. Sharp and he can correct me if I'm misspeaking, but that everything that they may propose for these decks or patios is outside of uh, utility easements. It could be as simple as adding a note to the site plan that says the units may have a deck or patio on the rear of them.
I could live with that. If we, would that have to be in a condition of approval?
That would be cleanest, yes.
As simple as a note. Then who verifies that note, Zach?
Uh, when we get the documents in, it's usually Mr. Sharp and myself who, who look at the site plan to make sure everything is, is in uh, some of consistent with what was approved. Um, if it's complex, we may call in uh, Chair Young to, to help review on it, but generally we've been able to do it from the staff side.
I, I have a question. Um, if, if I understand you correctly, you're going to identify those units that may have a deck as an option.
They could all have decks.
Well, I, I thought some would encroach into the easement if they put on a deck.
But we don't know the size.
Okay, so they all can have a deck?
There are some that can't because they're too, they're right at their setbacks right now. They could have a patio, but amongst the ones that could, that, that there's room to play around for the setbacks, you get all of them with decks or none of them with the decks, depending on what the owners would like.
Okay, so if there is a unit or two that cannot support a deck of any kind or even a specific size, I'm going to go with any kind. If they can't support a deck at all, um, should that not be stipulated in their bylaws for those particular units? Because if somebody buys those units and down the road wants to put in a, a, a deck and say, hey, uh, my neighbor's got one, why can't I have one?
That would be a nice notice for the, for potential owners. Um, not required by the zoning ordinance, but definitely good for future owners to know.
Mr. Noel? Master D in Section E calls out patios, porches, and decks. And it says each unit patio, porch, or deck area is restricted in the use to the co-owner of the unit served therefore is shown in Exhibit B. I never did find Exhibit B in there.
Those Exhibit B drawings are some that I believe came in fairly recently that show the decks and in relation to the easements.
So Mr. Sharp?
I have, I have, I have a drawing. I have it up on my computer, but I mean, again, I don't know if it's in your packet or not. Cause these emails were um, were being sent fairly recently. I can say some of them as early as this morning. Um.
Does that Exhibit B show the drawings of the decks on there?
It does. Like I say, you could, Susan or Mike or whoever wanted to share a screen, I can show you my screen.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, the problem is um, IT right shut off my screen sharing after we had that issue.
I can share it here.
And so I don't know how to go back and turn on, turn on screen sharing.
And he just email that uh, schedule uh, two or whatever the uh, can you just email it to all of us right now? Or no?
Yep, it was, if you have email, um, uh, let's see, Kelly Richter actually sent it out today at 12:11 PM. Uh, let me check, make sure everyone's on here.
I got an email from Kellen today at 12:11?
Yep. Hot off the presses. And it looks like all the planning commission members were, were on it. So you should have got something at 12:11 and it'll be an attachment called Enclaves condo docs.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up right now. I got it at 12:12.
It's uh, page five of seventeen shows the potential areas on there.
I got it.
So page five, if you have that open, that's the site plan that shows the decks on there. It's saying that the patios and decks are sixteen feet wide by thirty-nine feet, four inches long unless noted otherwise. So there's a few of them that are noted. On sheet six, it shows the decks in relation to the uh, to the storm sewer easements, which was one of our concerns from an engineering perspective. So you'll be able to see on that, that it's like a few of the decks probably have been shortened up a little to uh, be outside of these, of the stormwater easements.
Yeah, unit five, unit six, they're all shortened up. Or building five and building six, uh, units nine and eleven, they're shortened up, right? I see those now. And then actually building twelve and building thirteen is shortened up. So they actually have them in different sizes to stay out of those easements, Jim. But I think what Zach's referring to is are they going to meet and comply to the setback requirements?
Correct. I understand that the setback for the property is different than the easement requirements and I was looking through the, the drawings here to see if they had one that showed the setbacks. Um, and I, I do not see that unfortunately. Uh, it, it's, it's not required as a part of the uh, you know, as the Exhibit B documents.
There's only a couple of buildings. When I look, building nine, building nine, the decks start to get pretty close to the uh, the setback uh, conditions. And then when you look at uh, the other buildings, uh, all the way through, you know, two through eight, they look pretty good. And then building one might have an encroachment maybe on that western uh, the northwestern corner. And then all the rest look like they would meet and reco, uh, all the requirements. So there's only like two buildings that might not comply. I would think they could put a forty-five degree angle off the deck or off the structure on the back and make it comply. So if they pulled individual permits for the decks uh, from the permit to the structure itself, the building, then they would have to put a deck on that complied to the setbacks. If we approve this, if we approve this document.
Mr. Rizzo, what, what is your intent? Are you in, planning on having individuals put them in on their own? Or are you planning to make it mandatory you put them in?
Um, Mike Ross is here with us. He does our, um, the actual vertical construction. Mike, what do you normally do on your project, on their projects?
Typically, it's typically a homeowner that would put the deck in. Uh, we may upon request, but typically the homeowner is going to go to the building department, request a necessary permit and they would enforce obviously all setback issues.
So, thank you. So that kind of resolves that, correct?
It does for me.
Maybe we will collect that when they come in for the permit, for the patio or the, or the deck, correct?
Correct.
Or am I missing something?
No, I think that you stated it correctly because then it would have to go to the planning and zoning administrator to the setback requirements when that deck application came in. And if it didn't comply and meet those, then he would deny it.
Exactly.
Okay, so my view.
I'm good with that conversation as long as that's how it's going to be stipulated.
Yeah, my view, I'm good as long as that's the case.
Right.
Anyone else on that particular item? Okay, I don't know who brought that up. Mr. Noel?
Yes, I was just concerned about checks and balances. Now, we've got those then. If they pull their permits and our zoning administrator will be responsible to make sure the setbacks are correct.
Do you have any other questions or concerns or comments for the development?
I have one. I, I haven't seen any sketches of what these buildings are going to look like.
Right, that's a concern of mine too. Are they all vinyl? I hope not.
No, they're not. It's uh, there's, there's, it's brick and stone. There are, there's some vinyl in the back. I, I, you guys don't have elevations?
Uh, we didn't have anything that showed us that what architecture or materials you're using. We just got like stick drawings.
Okay, yeah, I get the, I'd have to forward you or have Rich, I don't, Rich, do you have that?
No rendering.
Available?
Yeah, I don't. I'm looking at the site plan submit on there. There is an elevations in there for some reason.
That was um, Mr. Chair, that was a question I was going to ask, what percentage of these structures are going to be masonry?
Yeah, good.
Do you have that, Mike?
I don't, but you know what I'll do? I'll, I'll text them. Give me a second here.
So I could imagine mostly up to the first floor in the front, it's brick or stone? To the first floor, on the sides and then vinyl.
Exactly. There'll be small, there, there's different elevations. There's, there's, there's roughly two different elevations and we'd alternate building by building. Um, there's a small piece of vinyl, there's, there's stone, fascia, and brick. So it'd be in the front seventy-five percent stone and brick. Um, there are elevations that are completely the front, completely stone and brick. Let me, I'm going to check with Dominic exactly around the sides and rear of the buildings.
And the percentage is dependent on the purchaser, right?
No, no, they don't, they don't have a choice. It's, it's predetermined. Um, it's just a matter of uh, when we, when we build them, we'll, we'll, we'll alternate. You know, we're not going to look exactly the same every building. So we'll alternate the, the, the front fascias on each one.
Okay.
So the peaks and things will be vi- uh, vinyl?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's a good question. Um, Mr. Noel, is that it for you? We can keep moving while he looks up his percentages.
I, I think I'm good on that, yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bailey?
Uh, Zach mentioned something about the, the side entry garages, but it looks like only one is a side entry. Is that correct?
Yep.
Discussed before.
And he has the appropriate, that driveway has appropriate width so that you can actually make the turn into the garage.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Bailey?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Noel?
No, my question was about the decks and patios and Mr. Noel handled that much more eloquently than I could have. So I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, very good. Mr. Berger, any other questions or comments?
I, I, I think I got all my answers. Um, and I think we're in good shape to move forward. If uh, I wasn't um, I know that I've seen some of the work these people have done in other communities with some duplex units. And uh, they were very attractive. Uh, if they have similarity to that with the stone and the brick and the faces, and then they simulate some around the edges maybe, but then go into vinyl towards the rears and stuff. I don't have a problem with, I, I did look through all the documents to see if I had any elevations. I couldn't find any.
Right.
But uh, I would like him to make a comment in regards to, other than I mean, we don't have anything to prove it to us other than his conversation right now. But I have seen some of the work in the past that has been presented.
Do you know the percentages of brick?
All right, so I agree with you, Mr. Berger. Um, so Rich, I've got a question for you.
Yes.
It's a relation, now I didn't get out my ruler, but I understand that there's parking for two, two additional cars in the driveway. But what about guest parking? I looked at it, it doesn't, you know, there's always seems to be an extra car there or something like that. If someone has a party, is it just going to be up and down that street? There are no additional spaces, right? It's just in front of your neighbor's yard?
That's the way we have it right now. Yeah, it's just, just on the road.
Cause I think we looked at that with that particular property, Mr. Berger, when it first came through under preliminary, didn't we?
Right.
That guest parking was a problem.
Right.
Um, you know, the question brought up about the driveways and the sidewalks, how do you guys think you're going to approach that?
We'll, we'll build the sidewalks continuous. Um, this, this is, we'll change the drawing to accommodate that.
Okay, and do you have any idea about the um, the color temperature for the lights you're going to use? Will it be a max of thirty-five or do we have to discuss the um, the downward?
Uh, we'll, we'll meet the requirement uh, as stated by the planner.
Okay.
I've got an answer on the brick.
Um, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, so basically the, I was incorrect. The, the front fascia is going to be completely stone and brick. There will be a belt line of brick around the rear and the sides. Uh, if it's a walkout, it'd be complete brick up to the walkout lights or, or windows, excuse me. So it's roughly seventy-five percent. Brickstone. But the, the full front will be full stone brick. There is no vinyl.
All right. Very good. I like the sound of that. Um, Mr. Berger, no additional questions, right?
I have none.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question now that we, that something came up. Um, is there going to be parking allowed on the street at any time?
Yeah, well, as the planners comment, so it will be in the fire chief, there'll be no parking on one side, but the other side that will be are allowed.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any um, questions or comments on the proposal as is? Okay, seeing or hearing none, uh, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd normally, I can't, I'm not going to make it with my throat today.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll try to give it a shot, but uh, if I make a mistake, uh, anybody can jump in and after the motion and see if we can get it. It's my, before I make the motion, it's my understanding, as long as we could approve this final site plan based on all the conditions of uh, the letters of uh, Sharp Engineering and the letters of Carlisle Wartman with their concerns that are, uh, they will be completely addressed. And obviously the, the letter of the attorney, they're all dated March sixteenth. So when I make this motion, uh, I want to include all the conditions of those concerns from each one of those individuals. And then I don't think we have to now make a motion in regards to the decks or patios on the rear, which I thought we might have had to.
No.
Yeah. Uh, because the, the planner said we could add a simple note that would help uh, create a solution to that, but is if they're going to be looked at by the planner and zoning administrator prior to construction of one of those patios or decks, then I don't have a problem. So I'm, I'll start the motion. And I'm going to uh, move that the planning commission approve the final site plan for the Enclaves of Woodbridge North of Market Street, which is parcel ID number zero four two two dash two hundred dash zero two three, which is zoned RM multiple family residential. And this approval is for the applicant, which is Woodbridge of Ox. And this approval is for the applicant, which is Woodbridge of Oxford LLC. And the approval is going to be based on the following, that the final site plan is consistent with the township ordinances in the approval of the original preliminary, uh, site plan. So further, this recommendation is conditioned on the following. Uh, that all the concerns of the Carlisle letter dated March sixteenth of two thousand twenty-one will be addressed and taken care of. The concerns of Sharp Engineering letter dated March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one will be taken care of, addressed and taken care of, excuse me. And, uh, the, uh, concerns of the township attorney letter dated March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one will be addressed and taken care of. And all the other, uh, parties, I don't need to put that in, uh, extract that last part of the statement. And so I would move um, that we approve this final site plan.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion?
If, uh, may Chair Young, if there's no planning commissioners, um, just wanted to clarify that the planning commission, yep, want to clarify that the planning commission is okay with waiver for the driveway spacing, uh, which is basically exactly as, as shown on the plan. And using cast iron light fixtures instead of downward shielded light fixtures.
I would amend my motion to include that comment from Zach Michaels.
Thank you. I'll second. Okay, then we motioned and seconded. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I would call for a roll call voteless.
Burger?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Knopf?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, congratulations, Mr. Rizzo, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Seeing you guys getting started over there soon as you can.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move to item number ten, the communications and committee reports, uh, the economic development committee. We did meet, um, this Monday, this past Monday. Uh, we had Supervisor Curtis with us. Uh, we discussed how that committee is going to function, uh, moving forward. Um, we also discuss, um, who in the community we should have with it. In prior years past, we had hmm, somewhere it's up to nine people in the committee. This time we're going to limit it to just, uh, maybe the DDA and the Chamber of Commerce, um, uh, members of the planning commission and, and the supervisor, uh, as, as needed or required. Um, it's an informal meeting. Uh, at that meeting, we discussed, um, what our mission was to be, and that is to ensure that the citizens, uh, of Oxford can get the services that are required, uh, that they need in their community. Uh, and by doing so, attracting businesses, developers, hospitals, and other service entities to join Oxford where it makes sense. Um, in addition, we discussed, we have a, um, we have a series of PowerPoint presentations that we do present to developers, hospitality markets, uh, restaurant markets. Um, that kind of goes over all the technical details of what Oxford has to offer. If you're looking to come this way, either to build homes, build the hotel, build the laundry service, or put up a restaurant or what have you. Um, it's about two years old. I worked on the first one. Um, so I am revamping the second one, updating all the data because things have changed since the first one. Um, we're also looking at, um, we've got Mr. Spiz looking at things from a county level as to how we can get support from the county. I'm looking at things, how we can get support for economic development from the state. And then Meg is going to handle things from a local level. The last thing we discussed was putting in new gateway signs for Oxford. We're still using the Boy Scout signs, uh, on the northbound and southbound sides of M twenty-four. And we'd like to kind of come up into the twenty, you know, the twenty twenty-one version and see if we can get something for the center of Oxford, for the center of M twenty-four. It welcomes you and then says, thanks for visiting. So I'm going to revisit the plans that, uh, Todd Bell had driven up maybe five years ago or so. And we're going to get that project moving again. That's pretty much the basis of our meeting on Monday. Um, how about the ordinance review committee?
Well, I'll start with a quick comment. Unfortunately, I, I missed the last meeting for the ORC. Uh, so if I could have maybe, uh, Zach Michaels, uh, step in and kind of bring the, the, uh, planning commission members up to date. We have been diligently working in the direction of finalization of the matrix system we have on all the zoning districts throughout the township. We're very, very close. I think we only need about one meeting left to finalize that before it'll be in front of you. But I'll let, uh, Zach make comments accordingly.
Yep. So as, as mentioned, we've, we've gone through the schedule of uses. We used kind of a matrix to look at that, uh, to make it a little bit easier than, than text here and there. The initial focus was just the office and the commercial, but because of the matrix, there were times when we branched out because it made sense. Uh, there are a couple of places where we've identified changes to the, the use standards as part of our discussion for the specific uses. Um, so that's kind of a nice holistic approach. We have identified, um, an area where zoning map amendment, um, is kind of sponsored and forwarded by the township makes sense. It's an area that is completely built out with single family houses, but it's zoned multiple family, which causes challenges for folks who want to do things like put in a pool or put in a shed because the setbacks are very different. And we are getting ready to start on temporary storage, shipping containers, and the big, um, temporary tents.
Okay, so you think that'll come to us on the twentieth second?
That might be tight. There, there's a, our ORC members are, are pretty active. It may be in May that we get that package for the schedule of uses.
Okay. That's it?
Yep.
All right. Very good. Let's move to item twelve, uh, planner and, um, engineer reports. Carlisle Wartman.
Well, I would defer to Mr. Sharp. I know he's got something to do. So if he's got something, I'll let him go first.
Nah, go ahead, Zach. Go ahead. I'll wait.
All right. Um, so we've had some questions from folks about how can we do a final site plan that's less than the area of the preliminary site plan? Um, in this, changes do happen between the different phases and even between a final and a revised final. In this case, it was a fairly isolated self-sustaining section, so it didn't cause any concerns. There's really no issues with utilities going back and forth. There wasn't an element that was required on the other side. So, um, there wasn't a lot of concern with that type of issue. If you're adding additional property after preliminary site plan, that can get a bit trickier, but, um, in case if anyone was wondering how, that's how we got here. Um, I have been working with trustee Nold, um, fire chief Pete, and, uh, clerk Wright on food truck materials. We are just about polished off with the license application and the permit application and kind of a process. It's, it's fun creating an entirely new process that involves different places and we're just about there. It's going to be going to the township board. Uh, their meeting coming up in April. Um, I am working on preparing a site plan checklist for applicants to make it a bit smoother. So the things that are missing aren't missing the very first time they come through. Uh, it's based on what's hidden in various parts of the zoning ordinance and also based on questions that, uh, folks on the planning commission have raised. So if there's something you want to see on site plans that continually isn't there, let me know. I can incorporate that into there. And to do, one last thing, I wanted to, to publicly get this out there. Uh, when Manitou Hills came before this body, uh, we as staff noticed it as a public hearing out of an abundance of caution. That's when we had staff turnover in the building department and we wanted to make sure we, we covered our bases just in case. We've had time to go through the zoning ordinances and have confirmed this with the attorney that it did not require a public notice. Uh, but we will be sending a letter to all those folks who received one to say, to let them know that you received it. Uh, we, we went beyond what we're supposed to and we're not going to be sending it out. But here's how for future reviews by the planning commission, but here's how you can keep track of what's going, going on with it. And, uh, you guys are getting very, very busy. Um, I had nine zoning permits. I had to go out and check today and I somehow managed to get home in time for the meeting. That's it from planning.
Good. A little levity for tonight though. Did you plan your seat where it's sitting in that light where it's at?
Um, not purposely, but I, I really enjoy it.
It's a, it's a nice handle. Okay, let's, let's move on to Mr. Sharp.
Okay, so Mike, uh, you were a little bit off there. Those plans for the gateway signs, um, next month, it will have been seven years since they were developed. Um, so a couple of years off. Uh, yeah, if you want to approach M dot, you know, I can assist you with that. Um, speaking of M dot, probably everybody's noticed they're back in town again to finish up last year's project. PK contracting was out there striping all the lanes. They're in both Oxford and, uh, Orion, finishing that up. They're going to be doing some temporary closures on the slow bound, you know, the slow lane so that they can get the planters in and the trees and all that type of thing. Uh, that work's supposed to go on here for a couple of months. So, but back hopefully it won't be too disruptive, but, uh, but there's going to be a little bit of an inconvenience. Uh, secondly, the manors of Westlake, which is the seventy-five lot condominium that you guys approved a little while back. Uh, we're having a pre-construction meeting for that on next Tuesday. Meaning that they have all of their permits and they are going to begin uh, doing work on that site over there. That's the last phase of the water stone development off of Dunlap Road. So, uh, people can look forward for some activity over there very, in the very near future. Um, the enclaves also, uh, I know that you just recently approved the site plan as of about eh, ten minutes ago. But they, um, they do not have all of their permits in place for the water in the sewer. However, they can still apply for a land improvement permit to begin degrading operations on that property as long as they have their soil erosion in place. Um, they have indicated that they would like to get that going now that they have their final site plan. So um, again, they are going to break ground very soon as well. Um, obviously we'll make sure that they have all the necessary permits and things in place. And that's all that I have for the evening.
Okay. Good. I've got one last item that I need to make people aware of as I, I've just got it out of my box, but it's the planning and zoning. They have online training available up through August. First, um, if you're willing to attend that, I know the township will help out with the financial burden for that. If you're interested in any of the online workshops, they're at www. Planning MI dot org. And with that, I am going to call this meeting adjourned at eight oh four PM. Thanks everyone for your participation. Stay safe, get healthy, John. Evening's adjourned.
Aye.
Good night.